Okay, we're going to begin the Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, October the first, 2019. Our first topic is to review Human Rights Commission's recommendations for the Social, Justice and Racial Equity Grant Program. And I am imagining that Stephanie is going to make a brief presentation to us summarizing the recommendations and so on. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi. Yeah, so I can certainly go through each recommendation, and if there's any questions or concerns about those, then we can address them at that time.
So you did not intend to make some kind of...
No, no, I do.
Oh, well, yeah. Do whatever you intended to do.
Okay. So I am here on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. The Chair, Tuante Peña, and Vice Chair Bijou Malibu both had prior commitments this evening. So I'm representing the Human Rights Commission on these recommendations for the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant for FY '20. And the 15 recommendations, how the Commission arrived at those was they held a work session where they solicited feedback from community members on how the process could be improved. And then they also surveyed organizations that had applied for funding and didn't get awarded, as well as surveyed organizations that were awarded funding. So that's how they arrived at the 15. And so just to provide a brief background on the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant, it was established by the City Council on FY '17. The primary purpose of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant is to encourage, empower, and engage social justice and racial equity initiatives here in the community. The grant has six areas of focus, and that's building communities, criminal justice, education, employment, housing, and health. And the next slide just shows over the past three years, the organizations that have been funded. So to date, the Human Rights Commission through the City Council has awarded, I think, over $127,000 in funding to 14 different organizations. And of course, the first two years, FY '17 and FY '18, the allocated amount in the budget was $25,000. And then, of course, last year, and for FY '20, it will be the $75,000. So the first recommendation from the Human Rights Commission has to do with who can serve as a primary applicant. And so the Human Rights Commission is suggesting, because there are limited funds, that public institutions such as governments, public schools, colleges, and universities not serve as primary applicants for the FY '20 grant cycle. They have really great projects, the public institutions, when they present proposals, and they have been awarded in the past. But it does make them compete with local nonprofits who don't have as deep as pockets as some of those public institutions. This recommendation from the Commission would not remove the ability of an organization to collaborate with a public institution. It's just that the public institution couldn't serve as the primary applicant. It also would not restrict an organization that was affiliated with a public organization from applying for a grant as a primary applicant. So like a student organization or parent-teacher association, they would still be allowed to serve as a primary applicant on the grant. So number two has to do with consecutive funding. So one of the things that came out when the Commission was doing outreach and having conversations with community members and with organizations is that some of the organizations that they funded in this last cycle had received funding in previous cycles. And so what this recommendation would do is it would kind of place a one-year block on an organization from receiving funds for a project or program. And this one-year hiatus would be true even if it was for a new program or something different than they had previously been funded for. And it's really, again, just because there are limited funds available and to make sure that they're spreading the $75,000 around with different organizations instead of continually funding the same organizations. So number three is kind of putting into writing or codifying the Commission to actually factor into its recommendation to the City Council whether an organization has received city funding in the past. The application has always asked if an organization has received city funding. I think it goes back five years. And so this would just require the Commission, when they're making those recommendations, to look at whether an organization one has been funded. If so, how much? And what's their duration of that funding? That was another thing that came out in the conversations, is that they had, it was thought that they had funded organizations that had overlapped with other funding opportunities that the city offered. So this was one of their ways to try to avoid that happening in the future. So the fourth recommendation is simply placing a cap on the amount that an organization can apply for in a grant cycle. In previous years, the Commission was kind of hesitant to cap the amount because they thought they might get an extraordinary proposal that wanted, that requested all of the funding. But after three years of doing this, they're pretty confident that a cap of $25,000 should allow for some good programs and proposals to be presented to them. Recommendation number five is about transparency and communication, just encouraging organizations that are interested in applying for the Social Justice or Racial Equity Grant to attend an informational session that will be presented by Human Rights Commissioners, and it will provide a background on the grant, and then also talk about the process and how they come to the decisions that they come to when they're making the recommendations to the City Council. The number six is to remind applicants, it would be something that they're suggesting be added to the application when folks apply, but it would remind them that the primary purpose of this funding is to benefit Iowa City residents. In the past few grant cycles, there have been proposals that are probably more of a regional approach. And so they just kind of want to remind applicants that the goal is to always try to benefit as many Iowa City residents as possible when they're making proposals to the council. And then number seven, again, is something that came out when the Commission was doing outreach in terms of things that may, should be changed or modified in terms of the process. And one of the things that was mentioned is that there should be a shared understanding of definitions. And so this grant cycle, they're recommending that social justice and racial equity be defined using this definition from Teaching for Diversity and Social Justice. And they feel like this will better help them as a Commission be, work better together, at least in the sense of when they're evaluating a grant, they're all, excuse me, an application, they're all on the same page in terms of what those words mean. And then it also should assist applicants too, and when they're writing their proposals, being able to actually look at the definition of what the Commission has in mind when it says "social justice" or "racial equity." So number eight was a few Commissioners just thought it would be helpful to kind of have the reasoning or the creative process for why an organization is making a proposal. They thought it would better help them evaluate the overall application. And then number nine is asking whether or not there's a sustainability plan that's clearly been stated by the applicant. As I mentioned earlier, the Commission through the City Council has funded 14 organizations here in town, and there's been a lot of great programs and activities that have come about because of the grant. And so the Commission is just wanting to ensure that those things are not just a one-year effort and that they're continued in the community. And so they want to see organizations demonstrate an actual sustainability plan for those projects to continue after the grant funding ends. Number 10 is about best practices and shared learning, and this is just the Commission asking the applicant, as part of the process, to share how they're going to get the word out about their project and how they intend to reach their targeted community. That is part of their proposal. And then number 11 is requiring grant recipients, after the completion of their funding cycle, to do a public presentation on their project. Number 12 is, the Commission is recommending that organizations be allowed to use up to 25% of their, the funds that would be allocated to them for operational costs. And I, my understanding is that this recommendation was encouraged by members of the Commission because, in past funding cycles, there have been organizations that have been funded that were largely staffed by volunteers. So they didn't have an office. They were either meeting in public spaces or meeting at one another's homes. And so they didn't really have the infrastructure to implement the project that they had been allocated funding for. And some of those barriers were not being able to use some of that money, say, for rent or for computers or copiers. And so that's why they have added this recommendation to the FY '20 grant cycle. And number 13 is if the Commission has questions, they would prefer that they're filtered through staff to the organization, and then we would just share that with other Commissioners and the public. And then final rankings, this is again just in writing to remind the Commission members that final rankings should serve a wide group within the community and also be a diverse project, so all the projects and people don't look the same when they're making their funding requests to the City Council. And then 15 was something that the Commission had struggled with in past funding cycles too, which is whether or not to fund a project partially and not giving the full amount that was requested by an organization. And so they felt that they would feel more comfortable giving partial funding to an organization if it's clear from the application that the project could succeed with less funding. And they realize it may have to be scaled back a bit, but it would still allow the project to move forward. So that's what I have. Those are the 15 recommendations.
Great. Thanks, Stephanie. And thanks to the Commissioners for focusing attention on this topic and for offering recommendations based on their experience. It's very helpful to us for them to do that. Here's what I'd suggest. I'd suggest we go back to the top, to the first recommendation, and just move through them. I won't repeat them. They'll just be there in front of us. And I'll ask, does anybody have any questions about, you know, item, recommendation number one, and so on? We'll just work our way through it and see what comes out of that. All right. So recommendation number one, who's got any comments or just, you can just say, "I agree" if that's sufficient, or whatever you want to say.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
Yeah, me too.
As long as Stephanie had mentioned that they can collaborate with, say, the university or even have an affiliate organization or affiliate relation with that. So that's good.
Okay. Item two.
I'm sorry. I guess I understand their point, but I'm concerned with that restriction, that what we end up on, what we end up doing is focusing on the organizations and not on the projects. And to me, the focus should be on the projects and the people who benefit from the project, not on who is doing it. So regardless of whether it's organization A, B, C, D, or E, I don't really give a hoot who's doing it, as long as they have the capacity and the ability and can execute what they have said they're going to execute. So that's, when I look at that and say, "Oh, well, the same organization can't be funded two years in a row," to me, the focus seems to be in the wrong place. It's on organizations, not on the results that we want for the people in the community.
There's many organizations that are newer, trying to start out, and, you know, if they were to be the recipient of this, you know, the next year, typically they, well, sometimes they may want more funding to help get them to sustainability. And so I would agree that this one is a little challenging to totally agree with at this point. But I do understand the Commissioner's concern when they are definitely, there's only so much money, and they're rewarding funds to someone that's been previously awarded within the last cycle.
What would we think about adding the option of one additional year so that there could be some continuity for programming? I think, for example, I know, I think at one point we may have funded something with CWJ for language learning or something like that, or business entrepreneurship, to give a little bit of a kickstart to that organization over time. But I think the Human Rights Commission's concerns are well-placed. What we don't want to have happen is that all of a sudden this becomes a regularized operational part of someone's budget, because at least my vision in supporting the Racial Justice and Social Equity Grant was that we would help emerging organizations get on their feet that traditionally had not been able to participate as much. So it's a hard balance to match or to meet.
Yeah, I could see where perhaps it's not a hard and fast rule. It may be preferred that organizations don't receive funding, you know, year after year. But I think there could be an instance where you would want to fund in consecutive years if, you know, it was a compelling proposal.
Right. And I would add to that, similar to what Susan had said, if it's, if it's something different, a different project, something, something new that also still benefits social justice and racial equity, I think maybe the wording should be, you know, preferably, preference could be given to the newer applicants, but the others could still be considered if it's a new project.
I guess going back to how we started this, and I guess I'm coming back to your point, Rockne, when we talk about aid agencies and emerging entities, we have specifically talked about, you know, reserving some of that money to help emerging entities, small, new startups to kind of get going. My recollection is, and maybe I'm mistaken, that our discussion on the social equity, Social Justice and Racial Equity Grants wasn't geared towards the organizations and starting or helping organizations. It was on helping people in the community. And so I guess I don't, I don't see that as necessarily, I guess what I'm doing is trying to look at what was our end goal? What was our real end goal in allocating this money? And to me, that end goal was in helping the people who needed help, not helping new entities start, but in helping the people. And I guess that's where I'm coming from in, in my thoughts on this.
Stephanie, could you go back to the, I think, the preceding slide? I got the one before it. You showed a slide that provided language about what the purpose was.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's do it.
Oh, it's down at the bottom. Thank you. So encourage, empower, and engage social justice and racial equity initiatives to eliminate My recollection is more consistent with what Rockne said about emerging, emerging organizations that come out of communities. So they have, we empower them to initiate actions that, in their judgment, would benefit the communities that they come from. And that, I understood that to be a response to the fact that we have a considerable number of new communities in Iowa City, and that we need to do what we can to help them respond directly to concerns and challenges they face based on their own experience. So I think we, we don't want to get ourselves in a situation where some familiar organizations use this grant mechanism to come up with new, new projects year by year by year. I think it's, would be better to make sure that funding is available for these communities that need to figure out how to solve their own challenges, but also to, not to exclude organizations simply because they had a successful project one year and proposed another project, but no, you can't do it. So I'm trying to parse a fine line here, basically. It would seem to me that it'd be better to provide flexibility for a second year of funding going to particular, specific organizations if the, if it's a new project that involves, is consistent with the other objectives of the grant. But I think also, we want to be making sure we can direct most of the money, at least, toward emerging communities, if you will.
I agree with you, Jan, on this completely. Yeah, but, you know, there is another challenge. I don't know if you guys putting that on mind or not. When you say emerging, you know, like, community-led organizations, where they come up with new areas, especially you saying that, our community is growing. Iowa City is not like before. We start having a lot of immigrants coming to this community and people who never wrote a grant before. And they, those community will apply, but they don't know how to put a grant together in a way that they can describe what their aim out of this. And there is example of that grant being submitted to, I don't know which one, but to the city, and it's being rejected. But just looking at those peoples, they did not really identify and wrote the grant the way that it will fulfill the mission of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant. But if somebody can teach them or can show them how they can do, their things is good and right on the social justice and racial equity. But the way that people like lay something, I just feel like, I remember in CWJ, I went somewhere and I just told them that. They said, "Hey, we give you the grant every year." And she told me, "Because you guys have a good grant writer." This is in Minnesota. I just went on events, somebody told me that. Then we really, those people need a good grant writer. But how can you do, this is also another thing, fill in the social justice and racial equity, by helping those emerging, new community group to like really apply for those grants. I don't know how you can do it, but that's something needed in the community.
And actually, I think last year at the informational session, the Commission did go over the application and give pointers on things that an organization should highlight or bring to the attention of the Commission. So there is a little bit of that at the informational session. And I think the application, it's called a grant, but that, you know, that term may not be totally accurate for the, for what the actual application looks like. I think the application is, is more of telling about yourself, your organization, attaching a budget versus maybe a more traditional grant process, too.
Yeah, so recommendation number five, in part, addresses your point, which I think is a totally legitimate and important point, Maz. So I think it's, it would be very helpful for people to show up for the open house that's described in item number five, and learn what they can, and that will enable them to write better proposals.
So I think for two, at least as I see it, we should decide whether we want to do this, allow discretion for an additional year at the discretion of the Commission. But I think to Maz's point is that if you do have an emerging organization, they get a grant, we also want to keep those programming going once they get some confidence that they got that first grant as opposed to yanking the run out, the rug out from under them. The other thing is too, is the Commission still would have the discretion to deny the grant in the year two, if for whatever reason the initial programming wasn't very good or didn't really meet the objectives. But if they did sort of knock it out of the park, this at least would give them that discretion to fund that second year. And I think it should be capped at two, because we do need to make sure that we're not, because my concern, to your point, Susan, is that we have some extremely good institutional nonprofits that do great social justice and racial equity work, but those tend to be external solutions. At least my vision was, is that we would create infrastructure within the communities so that they would address issues that maybe we're not seeing, we're not adequately addressing, and so it'd be more sort of the grassroots, and this would sort of allow that seed funding. So that's my thought.
So, Rockne, when you suggest providing the Commission with discretion to provide funding for a second consecutive year to...
Yes.
You're referring to organizations, right?
Yes.
Second consecutive year to a particular organization, maybe for a different project?
Yes.
But it depends on the Commission's discretion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would people agree with that particular point?
I think the discretion should not be limited to two years. When we, when we think about racial equity, for one, and we talk, and we talk about disenfranchised individuals that do apply to different grants and stuff like that, they're denied, often, you know, by some of the things that Maz has just talked about. And so this could be that entity's only opportunity to be successful in serving the community. So I would say for number two, again, the grant should be based on the program, similar to what Susan said, focused on the people, and there not be any limitation, and that would be at the discretion of the, of the Commissioners.
So who agrees with what Bruce just said?
How do you?
Bruce and Susan. Okay. Who agrees with what Rockne said? I do. Okay, so I think we've got a decision on that. Is that clear enough?
Mm-hmm.
I never know how clear our recommendations are. We need to do.
But just to clarify that, I mean, you'd mentioned both a consistent project and a new project, if it's the same organization or...
So my point is the organization...
Just the organization itself.
The organization itself. The Commission would have the discretion to add a second year of funding at their discretion.
And then one year off, and then...
Yeah. So I think we'd have some more of the turnaround.
Right. Okay, moving on to recommendation number three. I'm okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fine.
Number four. I like having a maximum...
Yes.
At $25,000. Sounds reasonable to me.
Yes.
I agree.
Definitely.
Okay. Number five, the open house session.
Definitely.
Sounds good. Number six, state that the focus should be on Iowa City residents. But I assume there can be some spillover to other people who live outside of Iowa City?
Yes.
Is that what the Commission's recommending? Yeah, okay. So, but when, you know, when I read that, that the intent and purpose of the S J R E grant is to service and benefit Iowa City as much as possible, I did not understand that to mean that the focus should be on Iowa City residents. I thought it meant all residents within the city, and that's not really what we have in mind with this, because we have a more targeted population within Iowa City that we had in mind.
Yeah.
In other words, that, you know, assisting new marginalized disadvantaged communities and that kind of thing.
I think what the Commission was referring to is some of the proposals, it wouldn't have been Johnson County, like, it might have served several different counties, but one of the counties involved was Johnson County. So I think they were talking about things that were occurring outside of Johnson County.
Yeah.
I'm not supportive of that.
Okay, so we're agreed with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they mean Iowa City only, right? Yeah.
Okay. Recommendation number seven?
It's fine.
Yes?
Yeah.
Number eight?
Reasonable.
Fine?
Yep.
As long as the whole thing is not really daunting, you know? It's not as if we're applying for some grant from the National Health Institute or something.
I think to Maz's point, I want to make sure that this doesn't become sort of some technical application. I know at one point, we considered the National Program, like, My Brother's Keeper. It's my understanding that's a fabulous, wonderful program, but like, the administrative requirements are significant, so we don't want excessive red tape with this.
Yeah, I guess look to what the program they're gonna do. If that's something really could benefit a lot of people in the community who in need to that programs, even though the way that they written their grant is not that awesome writing, if you have any question, maybe they can call them and ask any question about what they meant by this. Just like give a little supporting tools to those people, because they are new in this arena.
I do have questions about how they do the ranking, because some of these things are still going to be a little bit subjective to some degree.
Yeah, so I actually thought that question may come up. So I don't have the rubric actually in front of me, but the Commission, once applications are received, they, they have a rubric that is based upon these three sections that you see here, where the, most of their points would go to the proposal, and then they're looking at how the, the budget fits in with the proposal or the project. But some of the questions that the rubric asks about for them to score are, you know, the people served, whether there's a cost to participants to, to be in the program, and outcomes, and indicators, and past projects, and the mission statement of the organization. But, so each individual Commissioner ranks an application, and this is from a few years ago. This isn't the one from last year, I don't believe. But there were 28 applications... But there were 28 applications received, and so the commission individually, each member will rank a application one through 28 with one being the highest. And then that number, all the, those numbers are then placed on a Excel spreadsheet like this, and then it's divided by the number of commissioners that are participating in the process. And so that's where they come up with the, the ranking, with one again being the, the highest and 28 being the lowest. So I don't know if that addresses your question.
I guess when I ask you, those applications are public?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay.
Part of the meeting packet.
Sure.
Okay, recommendation number nine, about sustainability plan?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Number 10?
Yep. Yes.
That would be communicated with the targeted community? Okay. Number 11?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, number 12?
Yeah, for me, that's a big deal, because, you know, if you don't have the operating experience, if you are not gonna accomplish the plan that you apply, it's a really good idea to give 25% of the funding, yeah.
I agree.
Me too? Okay, number 13? Seems straightforward?
Sounds to me.
And this addresses the point you just made about when potential applicants are confused, they should just ask the staff and commissioners questions, but especially you?
Yeah.
Okay, number 14?
Yes.
Yeah, this sounds like a judgment call. I mean, you know, if you come up with a ranking with the, you know, the point system you just described, and you get to a certain cutoff point where you're gonna go over $75,000, then is there, there's gotta be some judgment then, doesn't there, about whether the ones in that top tier actually serve a diverse population within the community, or am I parsing things too much there?
Well, I guess if I were sitting there as one of the people ranking, to me, the instructions to the commissioners should be that your final rankings, even as an individual commissioner, you should be select, some of those coming to the top should serve diverse populations. So if I'm sitting there, you know, doing that, I shouldn't have my five top projects all be serving the same subset of our community. So if every commissioner does that, hopefully when you combine all of them, you also get that diversity. I mean, I think, I think they're gonna have to look at it once they put all the numbers together. But I think if that instruction to the individual commissioners is you should be selecting diverse populations to be served in your top tier.
Makes sense to me.
No, but I really don't get that, even though you're saying that, Susan, but what did you really meant by the final, like it should be served different population? Do you mean like the highest, even though you are not having the highest point, but if you serve like different population, maybe you can be the one who awarded? Or what do you mean by that?
So I think what the commission is referring to there is that when they're, when, when they're making their recommendation to the city council, so those eight organizations that they believe should be funded, that there is diversity in the projects and diversity in the people that are being served within those projects, so that they're not sending up eight projects that are all kind of similar or related and only assisting a segment of the community. So just kind of looking at the diversity of the proposals as well as looking at the, the diversity of the communities that would be served as part of that.
Which is mean the highest points that organization get?
You know, that kind of relates to question 15. I mean, the, last year, the commission decided to skip over a higher ranked applicant to make sure that they did have diversity in the communities that were being served. And so that's kind of how we got to 15, too, because when they do that, then the question is, is the number six was ranked higher than seven and eight, but seven and eight got funded. And so that's why they were kind of on the fence about whether or not they should still provide partial funding to number six, because they were technically ranked higher. So that's kind of how we got to.
Okay. I think that goes back a little bit to what Jim had said, whether it's a judgment call, and, and it is. I mean, they, obviously, the commissioners are, are judging these groups and how they fall into the six priority areas that benefit the housing, building, employment, criminal justice, education, and health, how, how that is, and, and what groups of folks that it is benefiting. So they are making a judgment, but hopefully in a positive way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, item 15?
Is every application going to have a question regarding, you know, could, could you do this, or could you, if only partial funding was available, could you still perform this? I, I guess my question becomes how, once you get to that selection process, if you haven't asked that question on the application, then it would seem to me it'd be difficult for the commissioners to then kind of make that decision, because otherwise you've got to go back and say, well, you asked for 10,000, but if we give you seven, can you still do this? So...
So, yeah, it would be a specific question that was asked on the application.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then I think that's fine. I mean, that way it gives them the opportunity to use all the funding. And do they, have they thought about, after the ranking is done, ever considering partially funding more than one, or is it always just been, we're either gonna fully fund or not, except as we get down to the last dollar amounts?
I, I think in past funding cycles, they've always decided not to change what an organization requested. So if that meant skipping over that particular organization, then they would to, to be able to fund the next two in line that the, the money still left could cover.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good deal. Seems like we've done our task for the evening on this. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
And thanks to the commissioners. Okay, next item is clarification of agenda items. I want to mention one thing just to get us going, and it has to do with proclamations. You may have noticed that there are six proclamations for tonight?
Yeah, six.
That may be a record, I don't know. I know I did five one night, but, and in previous times, I've asked other council people to read them. We could do it, that again tonight, but I'm gonna suggest that I ask Pauline to do like three of them, and I'll do three of them. Is that okay with you all?
Sure.
Okay, and we'll talk about which ones later on. All right, good deal. Any other questions about agenda items?
I have some, but I really prefer to say it on, like, on a formal meeting, just like to ask the city to respond, so the people who are watching at that time, they can know that we are addressing the consent. It's not too much discussion, and I don't want to take anything out of that agenda, just like regular response.
During the discussion period about the consent calendar?
When you say discussion, it's regular, nothing like taking it out, so we can have discussion, yeah.
Can you just let us know which items they are? Because I, often staff will go home if they, if they don't have anything on the, on the regular agenda.
Eight B, eight K, eight M, and item four. That's on the...
Maz, did you say?
Of course, that's on the formal agenda.
Read those again, Maz, please. Read those again.
It's only eight B, six B, and six C, eight K, and eight M. That's it. That's what is like on the formal agenda, actually.
Yeah, which ones are those? Six, six B.
Is amending budget positions, animal services.
Okay, animal services, right, the position?
So animal services position, the engineering position, and then you said eight K?
Eight K, the box car parking solution, and item eight M, report by Mary Grabit.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was gonna bring up item eight K as well, so I'll just say something, then we can, if need be, discuss it more. Looks like a pretty good solution, or not a solution, but pretty valuable, potentially valuable approach or activity to me. So I'm sure staff will be looking into that. That's the, the email about introducing box car parking solution. Yeah. I also thought, with regard to item eight D, that the possibility of having a bike sharing station at the fairgrounds or True Blood Park was pretty interesting for commuters who want to park and ride, except they'd use bikes. So I don't know, that, that can get into our, the staff's thinking about such things. Any other agenda items?
Oh, I just liked Mary's, Mary Grabit's eight C as a, just a motto, more trees, less potholes. Sounds good to me.
With regard to 10A, which is the regulating plan amendment, I'm gonna ask Eleanor to address a topic that I asked her about by email earlier. I guess I sent it to you late last night, Eleanor, but, you know, anyhow, what I expressed to Eleanor was that I was confused about why the staff was asking us to act on the amendments to the regulating plan and the proposed rezoning each night for the next two or three evenings. I, I thought we would do one and then the other after we'd made decisions about the first, but you gave me an answer, so I wonder if you could briefly describe that?
Essentially, they go hand in hand. If we didn't, if we didn't run, you're considering the regulating plan amendment in the context of this rezoning application. If you, if you don't make the regulating plan amendment, you really can't, you're gonna be voting no on the rezoning. If you would vote yes on the regulating plan at first consideration, I would see that just as an indication that you're, that you're willing to consider the rezoning application. Ultimately, as we get to the end, we'll have, they'll have to match up. I mean, they're both gonna go down, or they're, you know, both gonna go up, so, and that's not, we do that fairly often, for instance, when we do a vacation and a disposition, vacation of right of way, and then a disposition of right of way. You have to get the vacation done before you do the disposition, but we run them together so that we don't then unreasonably prolong the time that we're talking about one particular topic, essentially.
My confusion comes from the fact that with regard to rezonings, frequently, we first consider an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and there, it's not an ordinance, it's just an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So that's, we take that action, and then we proceed immediately to the rezoning. So I actually mistakenly thought that amending the regulating plan was like amending the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. The difference is that with the, with the comprehensive plan, it's not an ordinance, it's just a, it's just a resolution. So it is done in that instance. Oh, I should mention one more thing on this. I talked to Ann Russet today, and we don't have a conditional zoning agreement that's signed, so you won't be able to act on the rezoning tonight. You'll have to keep the public hearing open. You can choose whether you want to act on the regulating plan or defer that to the next time. They, staff is gonna make their presentation tonight, so, to get the conversation started.
Okay, I also want to alert the staff that during the formal meeting, I'll be asking about the traffic implications of the proposed rezoning, and about potential effects on pedestrian friendliness of the area. So I'll just be asking about them, so somebody will have to respond. Any other questions about the formal meeting agenda? Okay, I don't hear any, so let's move on to the information packet discussion, and we'll do two items that are continued from the September 12 packet. One of them is IP number seven, having to do tax exemptions for affordable housing. Staff needs direction on this, so Tracy, Bravo, you get a chance to do it early in the session instead of sticking around like you had to last time.
I don't know. Tracy Hsieh with Neighborhood and Development Services. As you recall, when you adopted the Affordable Housing Action Plan back in 2016, one of those action steps was to form a committee to look at the possibility of tax exemption encouraging affordable housing. Property tax exemption is a tool provided by the state that, to encourage affordable housing by temporarily reducing property taxes. State law caps that benefit for residential affordable housing at 100% for 10 years. So we formed a committee back in 2017, we started meeting in January of that year. We finished up our recommendation in May of 2019. We had six members of the community, and then we had four staff that worked on the recommendation. After looking at various, various scenarios, running a ton of financial assumptions and what ifs, the committee came to the recommendation that tax exemption is a viable tool for the new construction of multifamily housings with six or more developments. They recommended, the developers wanted some source of predictability, so basically, if a developer submitted, they're doing a multifamily over six units, that 15 to 20% of the total units would be leased to households under 60% immediate income, and they get a 40% exemption over those 10 years. That is what the committee recommended. There's some other caveats to those funds. A developer could request different terms, but if they did request different terms, they'd have to come back to council and make their argument. But if they, if they followed that, those parameters, then, then we provide and we would market it and see if any developer takes us, takes it up. This is encouraging new affordable rental housing outside Riverfront crossings, because you have a tax increment financing district there, and you already have affordable housing requirements. So when the developers are looking at it, basically, they're looking at new parcels and greenfields in outlying parts of Iowa City. This came back to you in May, you had asked if housing, the Community Development Commission could consider it, what, what their input would be. We took that back to H C D C. They approved it with a vote of six to two, but they did recommend one change in our, in the tax exemption committee's recommendation, it was for households below 60%. They recommend 40%. The tax exemption committee, when they did set that 60%, they did think about that. If rents are set at what's affordable to someone at 40%, that means anybody over 40% would be cost burdened. So that was a reason why the committee went with 60%, so a certain percentage of folks would not be cost burdened based on this. H C D C feels that that, that figure should be set at no more than 40%. So income eligible tenants would have to be below that 40% threshold. The vote did go down six to, and the two consenting H C D C members just felt that 10 years, that's, that's the longest we can, we can have the incentive and make developers comply with that. They felt for the subsidy, provided that was just too short a time. So what we would need is your, your recommendation on this tax exemption recommendation, and if you, if you want to reduce those beneficiaries to 40% as H C D C recommended.
Can you explain, Tracy, a little bit, and I'm sorry if I didn't quite get this, what, what's the implication to the potential tenants, and then also what's the potential implication to the developer or landlord of changing that from 60% to 40%?
To the developer, it's probably no change, it's just that you're eligible tenant. It might reduce the number of potential tenants out there, but to a developer, I mean, they're still gonna go through their regular screen and vetting attendance to make sure they, they can afford the rent.
And so are they, is the rent for the unit still gonna be the same then?
Yeah, the rent will be set at 40%. Whatever, you know, HUD comes out with those income limits every year.
Okay, that's right.
It can be set up at 40%.
Okay, your second bullet.
So the cash flow will be the same then? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Tracy?
I was concerned that it seems to just relate to the multi-units, the six or more units, and I continue to hope that we would have some incentive for developers to do lower cost homes.
Do you mean single family?
Of the single family.
We looked at single family, especially owner occupied, and for the, what tax exemption could get you. We felt in Iowa City that it wasn't enough, you would have to, in order to get a buyer below 80% and especially below 60%, it didn't provide enough of incentive to encourage that in Iowa City, just because our land prices and constructions are too high. So this is, this incentive alone wouldn't be enough to encourage it, so that's why we didn't look at rehab, substantial rehab, because it doesn't create enough of a increment. And just for single family, didn't create enough of incentive to help those people below 80 or 60% immediate income, not without some other, combining it with some other incentive.
I don't know if I remember seeing it in the memo, but did the developer or the committee give a response to the H C D C's... give a response to the HCDC's recommendation?
No.
Okay.
So the committee made the recommendation back in May, and then HCDC commented, but we didn't call the committee back. I think the committee, when they made that recommendation in May, thought that was the final assignment here, is that what? They thought that was the final recommendation, that's what they're pushing forward.
I guess my question is, why? I don't know the exact numbers in the community that fall at each of those percentages. And if it's not any difference for the landlord's cash flow, why would we want to reduce it from 60% of median income to 40%, which means you have fewer people who could actually rent these units? And what you're saying is basically, everybody who's renting is going to be cost burdened because the rent is set at the 40% level.
Yeah. I mean, for new construction, folks at 40% would not get that choice of a unit, because usually, new construction is quite high. In our estimated scenarios, like a two-bedroom, the market rate for a two-bedroom in brand-new construction is about $1,200. 40% rent would be $783 minus utility allowance, so it's a $517 per month difference. So you could argue that for folks under 40%, they won't get this opportunity anywhere else. I think that's what HCDC probably meant, they just wanted to provide this opportunity to people at 40% or below. The tax exemption committee was hoping that there'd be a portion of folks that would be able to afford these and not be tax, not be cost burden, basically.
Always wonder, at the end of the 10 years, what's going to happen to those individuals that's living there? I mean, what are the chances?
I, knowing, you might have some landlords that might allow a steady increase, but they would, they won't be, there's nothing that the state law requires, so they could return all units to the market rate. So they'd finish their lease, and then the landlord could go back to full market rent. So they'd either have to pay it, or they'd have to move. And that's with any of our, to be honest, with CBG Home, after that compliance period, anyone can go back to market rate, or whatever the market will bear.
Is there a particular group that maybe we can focus this on? I mean, we know that there's individuals out there, like within group homes and stuff like that. Is there any population of individuals that we can focus this on so that we know that they're, that those individuals will be looking for long-term housing? And so, it's just a thought.
That I don't know, can we?
I guess it's open for everyone, right? It's not?
It's open to anyone.
Yeah.
It's pretty much meant for the private sector, because if you're a nonprofit housing provider, you're tax exempt.
Exactly.
So this is just for private, private development.
I think, where are you going with the Bruce's? I mean, I mentioned, students were mentioned in that, and no offense to the students, but if they're considered a low-income and do qualify for one of these apartments, they're not staying here 10 years, you know, unless they really get vested in the community.
There are protections for that particular.
Yeah, the committee recommended the same requirements as the Riverfront Crossing's affordable housing requirement. So we would look to see if they're independent of their parents.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And those standard exemptions, like if you have a dependent child, you're in the military.
Yep.
You're a veteran, or, sorry, if you're disabled, things like that. So we would adopt the same way to deal with, basically, full-time students under the age of 24, as we do in the Riverfront Crossings. But that was the recommendation, you can always change it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tracy?
No, thank you.
So what do y'all want to do? Do you want to go with the HCDC's recommendation?
I can go first. I really would like to go with HCDC's recommendation, that the income of the household assistant unit be limited to 40% of the area median income. Because, as I said like many times, 40%, 30% of the area median income, those people have cost burden. And we, as a city, we've done a lot for 80, 60, but we haven't done like really more toward 30 and 40. That's why I just encourage to make this like 40% of the area income instead. That's my opinion.
What do the rest of you think?
I guess I have another question. Tracy, when I crunched the numbers and I used the, I think it was, I think it was in the staff memo, maybe it was in the other, maybe it was in the HCDC memo, but there was one of them, I guess it was Kirk's memo to Jeff, September 12th, that gave the dollar amount, yeah, of what the tax abatement would be. So I took the, for the 10-year period, for the six-town homes, $62,040, and that's, you know, a range, I realize that. My point is, based on that, that is $86 per month, per unit, that the developer or landlord is going to save in not having to pay taxes. I mean, if you divide that by 10 to get $6,204 a year, and you divide it by six to get the amount per unit, that's a little over 1,000. You divide it by 12 months, you get $86. That's not a whole lot of savings, okay? So I guess my question really becomes, if I'm sitting there as a private developer, thinking about putting up a six-unit townhome, and again, I still, and I apologize, I still don't understand how all the cash flow works when it's, when these are limited, where the other dollars are coming from. But I'm going to be hard-pressed as a developer, unless I've got a lot of extra money and just a huge heart, and don't care if I'm losing money, to go with the restrictions on rent to save $86 a month? Because it doesn't make sense.
We did discuss it. When we first ran all the numbers, we were looking at a rate of return so that we could guarantee like a 10% rate of return, a 12% rate of return, whatever was normal in the multifamily rental market. We looked at that, and the subsidy was way too high. So we're backing off, and our recommendation to you was going to be, this just doesn't, it's not financially feasible for the amount that we have to, we might as well just buy units, city manage it, we'd have permanent affordability. So we looked at it, and then the developers basically said, you know, I can't guarantee, even if you pass this program, that we're going to get developers that apply for it that I don't know. But they basically thought, the developers still wanted us to proceed, because they're looking at, if vacancy rates get really high, and they still, you know, they're going to build, then this was a program that they felt would help. They knew that, you know, let's just say the project required four affordable units, they know they would fill that, they wouldn't have an occupancy program, that they would address their vacancy concerns. So basically, the developers saying, so if in our market, we start getting higher and higher vacancy rates, then this incentive becomes much more appealing to them. So that's what they were talking about.
Thank you.
And in that six-plex, only one unit would be required to be affordable. So it's really closer to 500 bucks for, per month, for that affordable unit.
Yeah, it's only one, yeah. Yeah, I really think, you know, as you said, if we have that 40, maybe we are not going to find people coming and apply for it. We just have to lay our value there and make it. If the developer have the, because as you said, and they want to do it, they can come and do it. Otherwise, we really have to be serious about getting, to your point, affordable housing that will be affordable forever, not only 10 years. We have to think for like, I mean, like down the road, for something that really going to benefit the people for a long time or unlimited, is owned by the city, maybe managed by the housing fellowship or another organization. But it's something that, you mean, I guess, owned by the city.
I guess, back to the question of the 40 or 60, I guess my preference is to have it available to people under 60, so that you've got more flexibility as to who can apply for this.
Okay, so who supports, unless you want to discuss this further, who supports 60% versus 40%? So 60%? 40%?
I'm going with HCDC.
Okay, I think we're going to, we're going to go with HCDC. And learn from the experience, right? And we'll get feedback from developers and from the commission and make adjustments. Thanks. Are you going to do the next topic, too? Okay, so the next one is IP number eight in the September 26 information packet. It has to do with city and low-income housing tax credit funds and HCDC's feedback concerning that. So you want to summarize?
Sure. But first, I want to mention, by your approval of that last one, out of our 15 action steps, that was number 14. So now 14 out of 15 are done, or completed.
Did I hear a woo-hoo?
So as part of our recommendations about our next steps in the Affordable Housing Action Plan, about where do we go from here, one of the recommendations that staff presented was that we move that LIHTC set aside, that money set aside for low-income housing tax credits, to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County for ease of administration, make it easier for developers. There's many different reasons we recommended that. You guys came back and you wanted to get HCDC's input, we took it back to HCDC. HCDC did consider it. Their recommendation was that, yes, they would like the Housing Trust Fund to administer those money, however, they want us to work out a memorandum of understanding with Housing Trust Fund regarding the parameters of those funds. Once they go to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, it doesn't come back to HCDC or the city council, they administer it based on the parameters we set. So HCDC wanted to work out that memorandum of agreement and then take it for you for approval. So that's where we sit with that.
In terms of the mechanics of the Housing Trust Fund, I mean, is there anything, I mean, it can be anywhere in Johnson County, correct? Or is it limited? Are we getting that?
In our memorandum of understanding, it's limited to Iowa City. And then it also has to apply with our, comply with our affordable housing location model. And Ellen is here tonight, if you have any questions for her.
I guess my question is, what is HCDC looking for that we don't already have in place?
There was discussion about, they wanted to, kind of like with the Sand development project that you had, they wanted to use that extra $200,000, or whatever the set aside is for that year, to get more units that are, that have reduced affordability. So more units at 30% for that restricted rent. And they wanted to say like, okay, so if they gave money to a LIHTC developer, then they could come back and say, if we provide you another $200,000, can you further target more units at 30% or 40% median income? I think that's, I think that was, Charlie, that was accurate? Okay.
So I guess what is that doing, other than them coming back and asking us for more money?
No, that would just be, they would allocate, I think in the parameters, and I think the way we have the memorandum of agreement written right now is that this $200,000, I mean, it's up to the Housing Trust Fund to negotiate it with the developer, that they would make their best attempt to target, further target, what do you call it, income targeting the units.
At the lower.
The only concern I had with that, as I understand it, is these income breakdowns are set by HUD, and we're trying to facilitate and expand as many low-income housing tax credits projects as we can in the city of Iowa City. And I want to make that as simple and clear as possible, so we can get more and more projects, as opposed to sort of having that uncertainty as far as that goes. Because I think with HUD, the social equity pieces are baked into the enabling regulations. So that's my only concern with that. The other concern I have is I also want to make sure that our LIHTC projects have that socioeconomic diversity within them, so we don't have, you know, concentration as well. So that is my concern related to that. But that said, if HUD has waivers available that sort of would work with this sort of phenomena of, I mean, how unusual is that to have individual negotiations as opposed to, here are the HUD requirements, these are what we do for LIHTC? I mean, how frequent is that, that individual municipalities negotiate particular terms in terms of breakdown?
To be honest, I think it'd be difficult. Iowa Finance Authority sets a qualified allocation plan every year where they say so many units at 60%, so many at 40, so much at 30. That being said, to be honest, when we open up a new LIHTC project, whether it's at, half of it fills up with a Section 8 holders, housing choice voucher, so they're only paying 30% of their unit, or their income on rent. You'd have to talk to a LIHTC developer. I know when we questioned Sand Development, if we could provide more funding, what could they do? I went back to you, and it was, if I remember right, it was something like, we can do one more or two more units at 30%, but only for seven years. And I think I went back to you guys, and you guys decided it wasn't for the money, you weren't going to allocate additional money for that benefit. So I think it'll be difficult, maybe not impossible.
I'm with you, Rockne. I think there's enough regulations there, and I see Ellen and Mary Ann both out there kind of nodding their heads about kind of sticking with the rule. I mean, LIHTC is already complicated enough, and a lot of specific rules that we're dealing with. And, you know, we only get so many of those, you know, in terms of funding, you know, that comes.
They're competitive. We don't get one every year.
Yeah, they're very competitive. So I would prefer to stay with the way we have it set now in terms of the agreement between the city and...
At least as it applies to LIHTC, I don't want to do an additional overlay.
Which is what this is.
Yeah.
Right. This is only the LIHTC set aside.
You mentioned the Iowa Finance Authority, and in the notes, there was something about their scoring criteria, and that it was likely to change, and like provide an advantage one way or the other. Will that affect this, or have they changed their scoring criteria?
No, you'll get a scoring criteria in the qualified allocation plan that'll basically say how you can score more. So we look at that. Like I said, if, I said in the memo, if they ever change their scoring where a direct contribution from a city is more advantageous than a Housing Trust Fund, then we would take it back right away for that funding cycle. The points are very rigid about what you get points for. So they're going to maximize their points, and they're going to maximize whatever that ratio is that comes out in their scoring criteria.
Do you know whether the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County supports the HCDC's recommendation or not?
Can I ask Ellen? Ellen? I don't want to talk for...
Hi, Ellen.
Ellen McCabe, Housing Trust Fund. This is new territory for all of us, and so the Housing Trust Fund has set aside $1.3 million for the LIHTC round, period. Then the city of Iowa City's extra $200,000 is being discussed here. Our intention, as we put together for the HCDC, is that we will work to meet their goal of getting the rents as low as possible for as many as the tenants possible. But being in new territory, we can't know how that's going to look. After we allocate our LIHTC funds, the Housing Trust Fund's LIHTC funds, then we will go back to the winning developer or developers and say, what can you do? But we like the idea that the city, the city staff have put forth that we're going to streamline the process for the developers. They have enough on their plate to make these projects happen, that they're not going to have to fill out another application, they're just going to work with the Housing Trust.
Okay, I ask because I don't want us to be muddying the waters, but I do want to streamline the process. So if it's a good thing for us to direct this additional funds to the Housing Trust Fund, and if it's, you think it's possible to work out, what's the term here?
Incentive.
Yeah, work it out with the staff and so on. I'm on board with that. If you tell me it's a problem, it's really going to mess things up, then I don't want to...
We had to learn through this process that it's not possible to give the money to the developer, so we have to loan the money to the developer. If we give the money to the developer, that screws up their LIHTC package. Yeah, so that was the first learning lesson. And then, all we can do is give, you know, give it a go.
Going to be revolving at that point.
Correct.
Well, I'm going to support the recommendation until, unless you or the staff jumps up and down and says, this is not a good idea.
I was just going to say.
Are you jumping up and down?
Jumping up and down. So basically, you're giving them the consent to negotiate, and if they can't negotiate anything better, then they're okay with allocating that money?
Of course.
Okay.
Okay, so, does that sound okay to you folks?
Yes.
I think I know...
So we are authorizing the additional overlay on top of the existing HUD regulations relating to the income makeup of the LIHTC projects. Am I getting that right or not?
No, we're not.
We're not, okay.
We're authorizing the Housing Trust Fund to advertise it, and if they want extra $200,000, if they can do, if they can go above and beyond the IFA requirements and target more low-income people at a lower rent, that's great. But if it comes back that it just doesn't work, then they're okay with allocating the money as is.
So they're giving them the discretion, but they're not requiring them to have these in there?
Yes.
All right, are we on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see if I've got this. The staff is going to come back to you with, and ask you to allocate the money to the housing, I'm sorry, to the Trust Fund. We will put together, in that resolution, we'll try to summarize what Tracy just articulated. That will probably come at your next meeting, maybe two meetings if we don't get to it, but I want to make sure that's your understanding. You're not wanting HCDC to continue to negotiate directly with the Trust Fund? You're okay with staff summarizing what?
I am, yeah.
I am, yes.
Yeah, we are.
I am, yes.
We are. Okay. I think we can move on to the, thank you, Tracy. I think we can move, and thank you, Ellen. I think we can move on to the September 19th packet.
We have not discussed the September 5th, Rocky.
I guess I wasn't aware that we were going to, but feel free.
It's here, right?
No, no, I'm sorry, sorry.
It's listed.
Yeah, was it? No, it's my bad. Okay.
Yeah, it's listed, that's why. And I just have one item, which is September 5th, item 5, IB 5. You know, this is a letter from Anita Young, I hope I pronounced the last name right, is, I know that you respond, Jeff respond. I know that we as a city, we are prohibited by Iowa state law for like any form of regulation, the tenant and landlord relationship. I understand that completely. But to justify was a whole damage deposit the landlord used a photo from another apartment. Can the Iowa City Police Department investigate that action as a fraud? Is this something that people can go and talk to the police to investigate it if they are using to just to take the money? Because this is happening everywhere in this city. Students, low-income people, everyone, they put deposits there and no matter how much they clean, or like, you know, sometimes they take the deposit and people come and complain about it. I just want to see a way, because when I read her letter, that bothered me because I as a central foreworker, I guess I received a lot of complaint like this. And if they use something they believe is not right from another apartment, can we just refer them to, go and see the police department and they can investigate its action as a fraud?
Jeff, you want to address that?
I, I don't, I mean, I don't think so. I think it's going to be a civil matter between the tenant and the landlord, and they're going to have to take that up through the courts. And, and if the police could assist, I'm not sure you want your department resources focused on those issues. And we struggle, as it is, to keep up with the, I'd say, higher profile investigations that we, that we have on our plate. I don't think we have the staff resources to get involved in those types of matters. Yes.
You mean like, if I just walk into the police department and I tell them, I just think those people, they take my deposit because they use something else, they cannot go and investigate it? Because now I'm using them for wake theft sometime. I call the police department and say, those people, they didn't, those worker went there and work. They never get paid.
Yeah, I guess I'm commenting on, on the request to, if you're, if you're asking the police department to analyze before and after photos or where this photo was taking place for a security deposit, I don't think that's the, the best use of the, of the police resources in that case. I think there are channels through the courts for, for those to be resolved.
Do we know if there's any organizations established that kind of take these type complaints and from renters?
Well, there's, there's student legal services. There's been some lawsuits. Chris Mornoch, I think, has been involved in some of those, actually successfully, I think. But it's a civil matter. It's not a criminal matter. I mean, the crime would be something that would be a state crime that would be prosecuted by the county attorney's office. I would be, you'd have to check with her, but I'd be very surprised if she would consider a criminal prosecution under these circumstances.
I, I think there is some discussion of a tenants' union.
There is something for tenants' union. And also, I guess, Iowa Legal, even though they are very, very busy, because they are the only one taking care of a lot of things. That's why we need some kind of, Central Forecaster Justice can do that too. And I encourage you to reach out to us so we can help out.
Yeah, I think tenants are systematically disadvantaged. But I don't think there's much Iowa City government can do about that.
Yeah, I guess I was asking about the police, yeah, to see if they can do something. Yeah.
Okay. Since I accidentally skipped September 5th, are any other questions on that packet?
Well, Jim, I just, I just wanted to ask you personally if you had had a chance to look at the urban trees, because Louisville was featured.
I did.
Shocked.
I actually know that area really well, too, so.
Louisville, sorry.
Louisville, that's right. Okay, can we go to the September 19th packet? IP number 2 has to do with the October 14th joint entities meeting here in City Hall. And the question is, do you have any possible agenda topics to propose?
I did get one from the county already. It's an update on the Guideway Center by Matt Miller. That's the Access Center.
What's she called? Guideway?
Guideway.
All right, a new name. All right, I have a topic. And please tell me if you agree that we'd like to have it on the agenda or not. There's, as we all know, there's a tremendous amount of construction in Coralville, North Liberty, and Iowa City, but especially Coralville and Iowa City, having to do with large apartment complexes. And likewise, a substantial amount of construction of hotels. And I, I am fully aware that there is concern that we are overbuilding capacity both in the hotels and in apartment complexes. So I wonder if that could be a topic that we would want to discuss with the, with the other entities. And I guess in terms of discussing it, I don't know, if we could present, briefly present whatever data we have, like, we could get some information from the Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding hotels. And if we have relevant information regarding large apartment complexes in Iowa City, we could assemble that too.
I think that would be helpful, Jim, just to get the data. Because I know that people have talked a lot about the sort of overbuilding, but, you know, we have the 2017 housing study, is my recollection. So I would like to get the data on that. I think it's going to be hard to do much substantively there, but I think certainly to get an update from staff would be helpful.
Would this be intrusive? I know our staff is busy, so, you know, got stuff to do. Is it reasonable to?
It depends on what you're, what you're really looking for. I mean, we can give you a rundown on, on building permits, multifamily building permits for the last year or two without much effort. But if you're looking to get into more specific information, or having us trying to project out capacity and vacancy rates, that's, that's a challenging thing to do with a lot of time, much less a couple of weeks here. And with the staff hosting the APA conference next week, they've, they've got a lot on their plate coming up.
Yeah.
So I guess it's just, what kind of data would be useful for you to have?
Well, I guess I was just thinking of sort of pulling stuff from the housing study. Didn't we, we did a recent housing study, correct? I mean, just to pull some of that salient data.
But that's, that's really out of date now, I think. That's my impression.
It's our most up-to-date, isn't it?
I mean, there's the.
Well, but it's going to be impossible to update it in two weeks, is the point, right? I mean, maybe we should punt, we don't have time to do it.
Yeah, so here, here's one possibility, and maybe it's insufficient and excessive work from, for the staff to, if we could simply identify large apartment complexes that have been built or are being built in Iowa City, Coralville, and North Liberty, or whatever we can, information we can get, say, over the past two years and, you know, maybe some will be completed within a year. And just a number of units, name of, of the projects. Like, I don't know, that, that large project over in Coralville that is being built by CA Ventures.
The Latitude.
Yeah, that, that's one that comes to mind over there. But there are others over here. And they, so, i- if we could just identify some threshold, I don't know, 50 or more units in a, in a structure, some threshold. And I don't want to put too much weight on the number 50. And likewise, with regard to hotels, but I think we could just ask Josh to, Josh Amberger, to provide us with information from the CVB about hotels.
Seems too complicated, I think.
Too complicated? I mean, I don't want to push it hard, so.
I think the information would be valuable for all the cities to have. I'm not, it, it seems a little complicated. But, but I do understand what you're getting after. And when we are present, I don't think we can go into great discussion outside of just having to be informational. So maybe that's something that we can, I don't know what the feasibility of creating something like that in the future. But, yeah, it seemed a little complicated for the 14th.
You could, at the meeting, you could ask if that's a topic that you, the joint entities group would like to explore at their, at their next meeting. And, and by the time the next meeting rolls around, you'll have the year end, I'm imagining all the cities do some type of year end building statistics report, or at least that would be a natural time to do that, come, come early January, and, and ask the staffs to collectively work together to present that at, at your next one. And it may be a little bit more meaningful.
That sounds like a pretty good solution to me. So we could put it on the agenda just in the sense of saying, we're, we're wondering whether.
If everybody would be interested in a conversation, a future conversation about.
That makes sense. That sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
So do you want to include hotels and multifamily in the topic?
That's what I had in mind, yeah.
Which would that also include U-Highs?
Well, I think it would include everybody at that joint meeting. You have, you know, you have some rural communities in there, too, that may not have large complexes, but they may be having their own unique circumstances with, with housing that they want to add to the conversation. So we'll keep, we'll try to find a title that's fairly broad.
Okay, good deal. Okay, other, any other topics on the September 19th, sorry, September 19th packet? Hearing on September 26? I'll mention IP number 5, joint meeting with the UI student government. It's my understanding from Kelly's memorandum that they would prefer to meet in the spring rather than here, in the late fall or early winter. They suggested three different dates, the 11th of February, 25th of February, and March 10th. They'd be happy to host the meeting. So do you want to act on that now, or would you prefer to wait for a while? Okay, do you all have any preference about February 11th, 25th, or March 10th? I don't.
I don't, we don't have anything.
I'm shocked.
That's fair.
I'll punt on that too, Jim.
Is this, who would be attending this? All of us, or what's, what's the?
Yeah, it would involve the full city council and student government.
Yeah, the idea is for to have all of council come over to the IMU, and then everyone from the Student Senate will be present. So that'll be around 50 people, plus everyone exec, so up, up to around 70-ish students as well. This was included in the packet like, maybe like six months ago. But this happens once per semester in Ames, and it seems to work out quite well. So that's where the inspiration came from.
All right, I suggest the 11th of February.
11th of February, all right.
Sounds fine.
Okay. How about that for a decision? A lot of nodding heads. Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, go with 11?
Yeah, fly now.
No, 11 minutes, no, that's okay.
All right. IP number 6, proposed council schedule for this late winter and all that. I assume you've looked at the universities and school districts' schedules and know when people might be away?
It misses spring break, and I think mainly it's January that we were kind of trying to gauge as far as the CIP, because that falls on a regular meeting night.
Okay. Some, I don't know, my sense is that we should just assume that that's an appropriate schedule, and as time goes by, the council will say whether they think one of the dates needs to be shifted? All right, any other items on the agenda?
Can I just, while we have that topic open, the meeting schedule, just to make sure council members have Saturday, January 4th, that's our annual budget date. If that's not going to work for any council members, we need to know and adjust our, our budget schedule accordingly. And then a few recall, we typically do the capital improvements budget the following Tuesday. The way that dates fall this year, that happens to fall on a regular meeting date. So what we're suggesting is on that Tuesday, January 7th, we just start the work session a couple hours early, maybe 3 o'clock. And we use those two, two and a half, three hours of work session time on the 7th to go through the CIP. So that would be not a special work session like we've done before, but part of your regular work session on the 7th. We would just start earlier, earlier than usual.
Okay, can we move on? Sorry, Maz, but.
I guess that's good, but hopefully we're not going to have like really long agenda. We stay from 3 o'clock until midnight on that day.
We'll try to keep it short.
Thanks.
Yeah, there should be a time cap on any of our meetings.
The other option would be to, to just run the 7th like we typically do, have a 5:00 PM budget, or a 5:00 PM work session, and, and schedule a special work session for the CIP on a different day. From staff's perspective, it's easier to combine the two, but you may find it easier to split them.
Okay.
And so what do you expect, 8 o'clock in the morning, right, or 7?
Saturday, the 4th, will start at 8 o'clock in the morning. We'll probably do the breakfast, breakfast with the budget or something, whatever we call that.
Yeah. I forgot, but Kenzo's idea.
Yes.
Be mine, him.
Okay, can we move on to council updates? All right, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees and all that. So, I'm going to start with Pauline and move to the left.
I sit on the Chief Elected Officials Workforce Development Committee, which is a multi-county group that gets together at different locations. This time, we were in North Liberty, just to discuss workforce issues and how things are going in each of the counties. The highlight of the meeting, though, I have to say, was they gave us a tour of where we met, at the Centro Incorporated Custom Rotational Molding Factory. I didn't even know that existed, and it's been in North Liberty for over 20 years. And for those of you who don't know about it, take a chance to, to tour it. It's the size of three football fields, is what she told us. It's, it's huge. And it's not just like plastic bottles and other little small plastic things. It's big fabricated plastic things, like for parts for John Deere tractors and Toro motors and things like that. So, I mean, that's been, being done right there in North Liberty. So, it's pretty amazing in that it's been there, been there that long. But that was kind of the highlight. But they also did mention that by a state ruling, city council members may or may not be able to serve on, on that committee in the future. The state has made some ruling about perhaps being county supervisors being sitting on the committee. So we're waiting to hear more on that. That's all.
There are no, nothing that I've been appointing to that I can report on.
Yeah, me too.
Iowa City of Literature is having their book festival October 1 through October 6. So go to iowacityofliterature.org to check out the entire schedule. John Kenyon has done a fabulous job. This is essentially the biggest event that we have throughout the year. So if you're a bibliophile like I am, it's going to be a wonderful week, a lot of terrific events, and, and check it out.
Nothing for me.
Based on Kelly's comments earlier and mine, we've met with the Access Center. It is now going to be called Guideway. And so they'll be getting the branding and that sort of stuff going, and I think a tagline that'll make it clear what it is. We, the Board of Supervisors has accepted the bids for the project. So they will be beginning construction here pretty quickly. And so, yeah, getting, I think everybody involved is getting very excited to actually see this coming to fruition after a number of years of work, so.
That's great. Thanks for serving on that committee, too. Yeah. Which brings it to me. The Partnership for Alcohol Safety met a few days ago. I don't know if you want to summarize what they said, Simon, but if you wanted to, maybe identify a, a point or two?
Sure. We got a presentation from the Nightmare on his activities over the last year and upcoming plans. And we had an update from our subcommittees. So there are a number of subcommittees within the partnership that are going to look at different issues, other entertainment options downtown, your programming that might help issue of underage drinking or over. downtown, your programming that might help, issue of underage drinking or over-service, the regulatory framework, so looking at city code or state law. We received some updates from those committees, and I think that was about it.
Great, thanks. And the other thing is, the Metro Coalition met up in Dubuque as part of the Iowa League of Cities, and we had a pretty thorough conversation with the consultant who advises the Metro Coalition, especially with regard to what the state legislature is likely to do with regard to property taxes and related issues, and part of that has to do with the new chairman of the, what, the Finance Committee in the State Senate? Am I right? Yeah, and that person seems to be a little more enthusiastic about amending things in ways that we probably wouldn't like, so we'll see what comes out of that. But I'm being a little bit general here. Jeff, you were, I think, paying a little more closer attention than I was, so do you want to point out any particulars?
Well, we do expect that there will be an additional look at property taxes and maybe some further restrictions there. We expect that there will be some discussions on a 1% sales tax at the state level as well. Three eighths of the penny has to go to water quality initiatives based on prior legislation, and the question is, what does the five eighths do? That may or may play into property tax, so you could imagine a scenario in which five eighths of the penny is used for a particular purpose, and that may justify to the legislature to put further restrictions on property tax, so that's something that we're looking out for. We do expect TIF reform legislation as well, part of the assignment, the committee's assignment shakeup that the mayor was referring to, based on who's in what positions, we expect that TIF legislation may come forward, and that legislation would place further restrictions on TIF. Of course, at this point, we have no specifics, and it's all speculation, but we do expect that we will see that. So I think for the most part, cities expect to be on the defensive again, like we have been in the last couple of sessions, and we'll do our best to educate the legislature on, you know, what it is that we're doing, why we're doing it, and why we need the resources that we have to continue to move forward, but it may be another struggle going ahead.
Okay, I think that means we're done with our work session for tonight, so reconvene at 7:00 in the formal meeting.